How we doing?
Good evening.
Shall we have dinner?
No, we didn't meet today. And we were talking.
I was talking to William. Still well. Was it still good when you were up right?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Yeah. That's amazing. Yeah.
Thank you.
Praying tonight.
Him but.
Who is?
Second.
Larry? Oh, Larry is?
I was going to say Bishop Allen, but I didn't say that.
Bishop Allen? I like it.
You want to take the next two weeks out? Invocation?
Sure.
Want to get back into the pastor and after that.
You got 10 minutes.
Have you been doing much travel?
Sure you're not business.
No, definitely not business.
Definitely not business.
He's done with the business.
I'm gonna go see if I can catch a track.
There you go.
How crowded is that going to sound with everything else torn up now?
Don't know. We're taking an RV, so we don't have to worry about having a point of study.
Thank you.
Well, we did a two-day trip.
This guy is so fit, shaking everybody. Mark, who is the guy, the young man who was talking?
Hey, that's why you're seeing him.
Yes, I literally hear you, I'm like, oh, is that? He lives behind me now, is he the one who bought the house on?
Yeah, yeah, he bought.
Let me welcome you to the town council, the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for February 11th. Thank you for joining us tonight. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Larry Allen. Now please join me in standing for the invocation at this time.
Father, we thank you for this night. We thank you for the opportunity to be a part of our town. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to lead and to serve. Father, we don't take that lighthearted, we take that very serious. Father, we pray that you'll be with us tonight as we discuss the matters of the town, that you will guide us, that you will direct us for the benefit of the town. Father, we thank you for the blessings you give into this town. We thank you for the opportunity to live in this town. We thank you for this great state and this great country that we live in. Father, mostly we thank you for your son Jesus that died for us. Father, we thank you for all these blessings and these things we pray in your name.
Amen. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now time is 7:01 PM. At this time, let me call to order the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for Monday, February 11th. For the record, council members Allen, Finch, Wade, Egan, Clark, and Georgia present, and we have Cora. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to come forward and speak to the council. And this is the public forum, so if anyone would like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so. Before you come forward, let me take a moment to recognize a couple of people. First of all, I want to acknowledge our interim town manager Leslie Black, and thank Ms. Leslie Black for the job she has done as interim manager since November 26, 2018. When Mr. Charles Daniel, our then interim town manager, decided to leave his role with a very short notice, the council and I asked Leslie to take on the added responsibility of interim town manager along with her job as the assistant town manager. Being an interim town manager is nothing new to Leslie, as this was her third stint, if I'm not mistaken, at the interim role in Sunnyvale. During this time, as well as when Ms. Daniel was present, Leslie worked hard to balance her multiple jobs while supporting council with all our demands and even coordinated the council vision and strategy session. Leslie, the council and I appreciate your hard work and diligence and the good job you did in keeping the town going while the search for the new town manager was in process. Thank you very much. At this time, I also want to take an opportunity to introduce our new town manager Susan Guthrie. Today, the town council and I are very pleased to formally welcome Susan Guthrie to Town of Sunnyvale. Susan joined Sunnyvale this past Monday, February 4, 2019, as our new town manager. Prior to joining Sunnyvale, Susan served as the city manager at the city of South Padre Island, Texas, from 2016 to 2019. Some of her key accomplishments at South Padre included launch of Six Sigma program and performance metrics to improve operational efficiencies, completion of full assessment of facility conditions, and developing a reserve study to fund ongoing preventive maintenance, standing up an employee training program, implementing a vehicle replacement plan, and leading major infrastructure projects and comprehensive planning. Prior to South Padre, Susan worked at the city of Tyler from 2007 to 2016, ultimately working her way to the position of assistant city manager and interim city manager. During her nine years in Tyler, she was instrumental in many economic development projects that brought jobs to the community. She conceptualized and launched a lean Six Sigma program that resulted in significant cost-saving for the city and led the launch of a city training program called City University that received the 2013 Texas Municipal League Award for Best Management Innovation. She led the city's journey that resulted in the city of Tyler winning the Texas Award for Performance Excellence Engagement Level Award in 2013 and Progress Level Award in 2014 and 2015. Susan also worked at the University of Arizona Byer Five Institute from 2004 to 2007 as the Director of Marketing at the city of Mesa, Arizona from 2000-2004 in neighborhood services and at General Electric from 1997 to 2000 as the Quality and Training Manager. Susan holds a Master's of Public Administration from the University of Texas at Tyler with a 4.0 GPA, Bachelor of Arts degree from the Arizona State University, Senior Executive in Local Government Certification from Harvard, John F. Kennedy School of Government. She is an ICMA accredited manager, Certified Public Participation Practitioner, Six Sigma Green Belt, and Quality Texas Trained Performance Excellence Examiner. Susan was fortunate to find a rental home in Sunnyvale and is looking for a property to build her dream house in Sunnyvale. Susan is joined in Sunnyvale by her daughter Lexi and her fiance Dave. I was told that fiance Dave is watching on the internet, so they are welcome to Sunnyvale. Please welcome Susan Guthrie to Sunnyvale. Okay, now back to public forum. If anyone would like to come forward and talk to the council, please do so at this No one is coming forward, so I am going to close the public forum. At this time, the next item is the consent agenda items. Council, we have five items on the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the proposed meeting schedule for 2019. Minutes of regular town council meeting for January 28, 2018, 2019. Three, discuss and consider second reading of Ordinance 19-02, an ordinance of the Town of Sunnyvale of Texas ordering a general election to be held in said town at the next uniform election date on the fourth day of May 2019 for the purpose of electing a mayor and town council places one and two. Designating the date for a runoff election if needed, designating the place at which said election is to be held, making provisions for the conduct of that election and other provisions incident and relating to the purpose of this ordinance, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Item number four, discuss and consider second reading of Ordinance 19-01, an ordinance of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas ordering a special election to be held in said town at the next uniform election date on the fourth day of May 2019 for the purpose of electing one council member, place six. Designating the date for a runoff election if needed, designating the place at which said election is to be held, making provisions for the conduct of that election and other provisions incident and relating to the purpose of this ordinance, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Item number five, discuss and consider second reading of Ordinance 19-03, an ordinance of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas ordering a special election to consider proposed amendments to the Town of the Home Rule Charter of the Town of Sunnyvale at the next uniform municipal election date on the fourth day of May 2019. Designating the place at which said election is to be held, making provisions for the conduct of the election and other provision incident and relating to the purpose of this ordinance, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Council, is there any of these agenda items to be taken off the consent agenda? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through five as presented?
Motion approved, items one through five as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Clark.
Second.
Second by Mr. Finch to approve consent agenda items one through five as presented. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed 5-0. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, that is item number six, hold a public hearing, discuss and consider the first reading of Creekview Co. Plan Development Ordinance 19-08, a request by Don Ping, Ping Interest Incorporated, to change the town's future land use plan from employment commercial to medium-density residential and the zoning map from highway commercial and single-family pre to single-family five plan development, Creekview Co. Ordinance 19-08. The bidary?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The applicant has recently requested that this item be postponed to, no, March 11th, rather tabled, so his representative is here to speak in case you have any questions.
Okay. Council, the applicant has requested this item to be tabled, but this is on the agenda, so I am going to allow discussion on this topic, and it's, at the end, it's the council's pressure to take an action or to table this agenda. I'm going to invite the applicant to come forward if he'd like to come and talk to the council at this time. Good evening, sir. Would you state your name and address and also fill up that yellow sheet for me, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Jonathan Vincent, 2323 Ross Avenue in Dallas, representing Ping Interest. And as Mr. Delonhill said, that's exactly right, we would like to request a postponement. We were fortunate enough to get a recommendation of approval at P&amp;Z, but we're still doing some work with staff on a number of the items, like the development agreement and some other things, so respectfully, we'd like to ask for a postponement tonight.
Okay. Council, any question for the applicant? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Council, are there any discussions on this topic? Okay, it's a, I could open up the public hearing at this time. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the council, please do so.
Henry Powell, 109 Sunbird Lane.
Good evening, Mr. Powell.
Good evening. The comprehensive plan allows for age-restricted housing, and when I was campaigning last year, I heard from a lot of neighbors that they were very much like, as they retire, to stay in Sunnyvale, but don't necessarily want to be able to, can't afford or don't want to stay in large homes with large acreage that they have to maintain. So I think age-restricted housing is a good option for Sunnyvale. I would caution the council a little bit that, you know, when we start doing something like this, we may want to put our foot into the water a little more slowly than 157 lots that are being rezoned to five residences per acre. That's a substantial variation from where we currently are. I think it's very important to nail down and absolutely be sure that the age restriction, the actual age restriction, is in accordance with what we've envisioned in the comprehensive plan and that it has no impact on our schools, that it's a real age restriction and not just, like some of the other proposals we've seen, an effort to be able to pile more houses into smaller lots so the developer can make more money. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments? Anyone like to come forward? Yes, sir, come on forward.
Jonathan Vincent again, I certainly appreciate the comment. That's one of the reasons why we're working to make sure that all of this is in good order, because we do seriously want to make this age-restricted, and as you can imagine, that's a fairly complex topic, so we're trying to work through it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, if no one else is coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Council, I'm going to turn back over to, are there additional comments or questions? Are there any questions for staff at this time? Council, you had the request from the applicant. What's your pleasure?
Well, this is a question for staff. When, before this comes to us, will we have our land attorney look at it?
We've had our attorney. They are suggesting, I believe it was going to be one of our recommendations tonight, that before this is finalized, that they review all HOA documents. As, at this point, this is more conceptual, so they haven't done all the footwork beforehand to get all the details of the HOA restrictions in place, but that was one comment bar land use attorney, so being that this was still the first reading, you know, have another time to put it together.
Right, thank you.
So, do we need to take an action, the first reading? Do we table it? What's the process for the first reading?
So because you've opened the public hearing, you need to continue the public hearing to the March 11th meeting?
Okay.
If that's the date you want to choose, but you need to continue the public hearing.
So keep it, table it till March 11th? Is that the option we have? Or do we just keep it for second reading on March 11th?
Whatever your pleasure is as far as readings go, but you need to continue, the wording should be that you're going to continue the public hearing and consider either first or second reading on that date.
Okay, got it. Okay, council, any additional discussions on this one?
Mayor, I just, my comment is, is I think that this should be, the subsequent meeting on the 11th should be for the first reading, not the second reading, just so that we get a chance to digest this, negotiate, and see what we can come up with. Right now, they've asked for the moon, we need to make sure that the moon is really where we want to be, or do we want to be somewhere in between?
We can table this till March 11th, right? Mr. Egan, is that a motion? Or you want to make a motion on that one?
Make the motion to table and hold the public hearing open until the 11th.
Council, you have the motion, you have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Egan, second by Mr. Allen to table this application till March 11th.
And that would be first reading?
That'll be the first reading. That be acceptable to you? Okay. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed 6-0. We'll see you on March 11th. Moving on to the next agenda item, that is to discuss and consider the second reading of Ordinance 18-30, an ordinance amending the Town Unified Development Ordinance, Ordinance 17-09 duly passed by the town council on March 26, 2018, as amended from time to time so as to review and amend section 3.06 zoning development regulations, specifically section 3.06.05 fence standards, as well as other associated sections.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the second reading, but to give the public and some background on this issue, it came about to our attention after the passage of the UDO that the fence standards were lacking in regards to non-residential fences. So that's what we have been addressing with you all in the first reading. We were able to nail down what the desires as far as allowances and then what we would like to exclude. We did find that we wanted, that council's wishes were to include more specific details in regards to exclusions of specific types of fencing, as well as to reconcile differences in the requirements for residential, non-residential. You all have all the details for you, but I would like to highlight a couple of the things we have changed since the first reading. So if you go to the exhibit one, you'll see that the fifth, we have limited chain link fencing for new fence construction in residential, while we have kept the non-residential allowance of chain link, so as long as it is screened from adjacent public areas, properties, and properties by either structure or solid landscaping. We have also added that residential fences shall be required to be constructed so that constructed so that the fence posts face the interior side of the fence or constructed so that the fence posts are not visible from the public street. The fence posts may be visible from the public street if they are architecturally integrated into the fence design or the posts are constructed with some sort of ornamental detail. Fence posts facing an alley are exempt from this requirement. We have also stated that except for fences facing an arterial right-of-way, they do not, fences facing arterial right-of-way do not have to adhere to the 50% visibility. Fences adjacent to a dedicated open space and a budding right-of-way are exempt from the 50% open space requirement. And lastly, we have also added that no existing non-conforming residential fence constructed prior to the effective date of the UDO shall be compelled to comply with the current UDO fence material requirements of this section unless there is a repair or addition greater than 75% of the existing fence for a property. The percentage shall be calculated using the total linear feet of the fence along the subject property boundaries. This was increased from 50% is what we have been, has been our level that we require. So with all that being said, staff recommends approval of this with said changes since the first reading. Y'all have any questions?
Council, question for staff.
Is this first reading or second reading?
Oh, this is the second reading.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing.
Henry Powell, 109 Sunbird Lane. This is one of the provisions in the UDO that created a lot of anxiety from the town's residents when the UDO was being considered last year. And I compliment the town for taking a much deeper look at how this particular ordinance needs to be amended than what was proposed a couple months ago, or a month ago. And really getting into it and looking at comprehensively how it needs to be fixed. So for example, fixing the provision that prohibited fence posts from being viewable from the street, from the public street, prohibited all kinds of fencing. It prohibited three-row fencing, wrought iron fencing, all kinds of stuff. So the stipulation that if it's incorporated into the design of the fence, that's a necessary feature. The, one of the problems that we were having previously is when residences were doing a, residents were doing a repair to the fence, the town was coming in and forcing them to comply with the UDO for the new section of fencing, and that was creating a lot of problems. So again, recognizing that, I think, is admirable. However, I still would express some concern, because if you have a fence, it's a wood fence, a nice wood fence, and it's 10 or 15 years old and needs to be replaced, typically we don't just replace 75% of our fence, we replace the entire fence. And if that means conforming to the UDO, that could be a problem, especially if it doesn't conform to the existing fence, and it causes changes in the landscaping or changes in the material or a number of other things. So I would hope that the city would give a lot of latitude to our residences when we try to replace our fences with respect to conformity to this particular standard. Otherwise, what it causes us to do is just leave an old fence up, because it costs a lot more money to conform to the UDO than simply replacing the fence. So that's still a consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Anyone else, anyone else would like to come forward? Anyone else would like to come forward? Okay, no one else is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Counsel, other additional discussions or questions? Did this address the concerns you brought up last time?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to say that I worked with Rashad and Eric, and they did an excellent job of putting this together. It may not be everything we would hope for, but, you know, it's a matter of opinion. I don't disagree with what Emory was saying, but it's a matter of opinion as to how much is going to get done and when it's going to get done and what have you. I just think that this is a major step, and we can see how it moves forward now that we've opened up the standard, the restrictions somewhat. And then if we find that the restrictions are still not tolerable, then we go back in and fix it again, is the way that I saw it. But again, kudos to Eric and Rashad for working on this and getting it put together. They did a little bit more than what I'd initially noted out to them, but I think it was a good team effort nonetheless.
Mr. Vay?
Yeah, that, Emory brings up an interesting point. So, would somebody attempt to repair, replace less than 75% so that they could keep their same type fence? And how long would they have to wait before they decided to do another less than 75% so that they could end up replacing the whole fence within a year's time, let's say? Let's say you have a three-sided fence, which is pretty typical. So, could you replace one side this time and wait another 60 days and replace another side? So, would that, is there any restriction on that?
That's a-
We're repairing or replacing?
Generally, what this is trying to, many of the, sorry, just in exactly answering your question, but we changed this because we felt that a lot of times with the fencing around people's property, especially in the front yard ones, it's so minimal that if it were, you know, it's always floating around 50%, we just decided up to three-quarters, the entire fence is in disrepair, is dilapidated, then at that point, we require them to adhere to the new one. Now, your question, so, a little bit difficult answer, I'm not sure how to answer, to be honest.
Just a thought, because we have lots of wood and fences in the town, and most people have a wooden fence for a particular reason, as opposed to transparent wrought iron. And it does cost money to replace. So, they could stay under 75%, which by the way, is three-fourths of their fence, keep that in mind. And a lot of times, one whole side of that is a shared fence. So, just wondering if that, is there a time limit on when you could replace sections of your fence in the tent to stay under 75%?
That's, I guess I'd be contingent on how quickly our code enforcement is monitoring these fences and the sections that are in disrepair, but that is something we can look into more closely.
Mr. Public, close the public here. Thank you. Yes, sir. Let me ask the counsel, are you open to accepting this ordinance with an action for the town staff to go back and, or call additional details or clarifications? Is that something we can do? Okay. If that's the case, Susan, what do you think? Is that the right approach?
Yeah, you could, I mean, it sounds like it's a lot of progress. It's a step in the right direction. We could go ahead and pass it, monitor it closely. If we see that people are, you know, kind of doing a workaround and it's not meeting the spirit of what you wanted, we can come back and amend it again, but we can monitor it in the meantime.
Okay. So, let's go with that. If that's the case, can I have a motion with respect to ordinance 18 dash 30, and ordinance amending the town unified development ordinance 17 dash 09 duly passed by the town council on March 26, 2018, as amended from time to time so as to review and amend section 3.06 zoning development regulations, specifically section 3.06.05 fence standards, as well as other associated sections? Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve ordinance 18 dash 30. We have a second. Second by Clark to approve ordinance 18 dash 30 as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Any additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed, 6-0. Moving on to item number eight, hold a public hearing, discuss and consider the first reading of ordinance 19 dash 07, and ordinance amending the town unified development ordinance, ordinance 17 dash 09 duly passed by the town council on March 26, 2018, as amended from time to time so as to review and amend section 3.06.09.0B supplemental regulations, as well as any other associated sections. Mr. Angel?
Yes. So, the United States Postal Service has mandated that all new developments utilize centralized mailboxes, also known as cluster box units or CBUs, as opposed to individual mailbox units. Staff surveyed the existing centralized mailboxes within town limits, and they're showing in our next slide. These are placed in Stony Creek, as well as the Homestead, Phase 6. Staff reviewed the installation options in other cities as well, and proposing some new regulations. We're deciding to go ahead and get ahead of the game, so to speak, on this, to maybe offer some alternatives. Currently, USPS places these cluster box units about midpoint in a street on a shared lot line. And this started, I want to say back in 2012, but they've been slowly, I guess, addressing certain phases, and there's not a whole lot of, they don't let us know prior to it, so these just kind of go out. So, Rashad and I felt that right now, we can go ahead on the next phases that come in, next phase of development, perhaps Track 3 and 4, Stony Creek, we can offer, we can mandate that these cluster box units are placed in open space areas rather than in the middle of lot lines. Also, we have proposed some, this is an example, sorry, of where it is in Rockwall, neighborhood in Rockwall, that's more or less what, how it will appear in Stony Creek and Homestead, right there at the stub outs. It's ADA accessible, and there's nothing wrong with it. However, we thought that perhaps we could require higher architectural designs, higher quality. These are some examples that we've seen online that certain companies specialize in that are options. Now, at the end of the day, the US Postal Service has a say whether they, it goes in open space or it goes in the middle of the street. We wanted to go ahead and give this requirement, that way a developer can reach out to the United States Postal Service and seek approval for not just this type of design, but the fact that it can be relocated at the end of a street rather than in the middle. So, right now, really, staff is just seeking your feedback on this. And with all that being said, staff has proposed an amendment to add design criteria to centralized mailboxes. They'll be used by developers when installing these units. Please note, in some cases, the United States Postal Service, as I said, may override the suggested town locations. They approve a specific location for the delivery route. Staff seeking feedback. If you have any questions, go ahead.
So, let me ask you, so, I'm assuming these designs you have proposed here, things USPS has approved in the past?
These examples? Yes. In other cities, they have. Now, they usually have a minimum requirement to how many, how many mailboxes are put in each of these clusters. They usually give them an option of a palette of different type of designs, usually wrought iron, black, as you saw in the earlier pictures, but these are options as well.
Do we have the option to make it more architecturally beautiful?
Yes.
More attractive?
Yes, we would be the first company, the first, sorry, first city of all the cities nearby of research that is doing this, but due to feedback received from the community about the current placement, we felt that it'd be good to go ahead and give you all this option.
So, will we specify this option, so we will have a general criteria? How does-
If you, if you go to your packet, we have written out a little outline under supplemental regulations-
Right.
-that gives these different options.
So, this pictures will be part of it?
No, these pictures are suggestions to-
I saw the aluminum roll iron, the stone brick, and I saw, okay.
Yeah, that was more, the bottom right one was more my selection for this, as we have masonry, cladding required throughout the city. But the exhibit one is more or less a, an outline of the suggestion we're considering for the UDO for you all.
And Eric, just for clarification, it's not the mailbox that we're identifying because that's done by the post office, but it's the structure that covers the mailbox is what we're, is what the UDO is going to drive?
The structure and also requiring it to be in open spaces.
Yeah, location as well, yes.
Counsel, additional discussion on this? Additional questions for staff? Mr. Vay?
So, Eric, we know that the developer puts these in, but we had one that was destroyed last week. So, whose responsibility is it to replace it once it's damaged and there happens to be no perpetrator there to file an insurance claim because they left the scene? So, who replaces it? Or how does it get replaced?
I believe it would fall back on the HOA, as that would probably be adopted in the documents if it goes in an open space. I imagine if these were single, you know, units in front of everybody's house, then it'd be on the homeowner.
So, what happens in the meantime? I mean, does people not get mail for three months while we get the HOA?
Stony Creek 5B, they were, they've just began, 2E, my apologies, is just now going to start using the centralized box units, but up until right now, they've been going to the post office to receive their mail. But right this week or the next is when we estimate that they're going to start using those boxes. So, my guess is if those were destroyed, it would just revert back to the post office, and that's where you'd have to collect your mail.
Okay. Can we put any kind of regulations in place that they have to be replaced, say, within three or four weeks? So that we don't have citizens, I mean, some of these, I mean, one of those is probably 30 or 40 mailboxes. So, in our, if I'm not mistaken, our mail comes out of Garland, is that correct?
I'm not.
So, I mean, that's an inconvenience.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we can definitely look into that.
Yeah, I just wondered because, you know, it's an inconvenience for our citizens-
Yes.
-and also a cost to the homeowners association if somebody were to destroy one of these boxes, especially the nice, pretty ones.
So, the regulation, so the stipulation is to require the HOA to replace it, or-
Well, I mean, I can see-
Summon, right?
Yeah, I guess you have to if it's HOA's responsibility, but I can see delays with insurance claims and, and design recommendations and just, is that the way it works?
Just, and just for the background I have on it, is your mailbox, you go to Home Depot and buy, and put up on the post in front of your house belongs to the post office. And if it's vandalized or ruined, you have to replace it, not the post office. Now, in this scenario that you're talking about, it would revert back to the HOA, and the mail would be retained at the post office, just like it would be if it were our personal mailbox that we're fortunate enough to have. It's, it's just a scenario that I think what needs to be built into the HOA covenants, and it needs, probably has to be dictated by the town, is that they maintain a reserve fund within the HOA accounting that replaces a mailbox in case one gets brutally damaged.
Yes.
Additional questions for staff? Yes, Ms. Allen?
So, Eric, appreciate the work you've done on this. I think in the last three months, I probably had 15 or 20 phone calls about mailboxes. So, there's obviously a lot of people in the town that don't particularly like these that are popping up in Homestead and Stone Canyon, or Stony Creek.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I don't particularly like them either, so I think my question is, I like the direction we're going so that we have a centralized mailbox that looks like this at some level.
Mm-hmm.
It does have to be this way, but it's covered, it's protected, it's lit, it's accessible for everybody, not just whoever's house it's in front of. What I don't like is the individual boxes that are on the street, and is it our intent to restrict those individual boxes? I, yeah, I can't, I was fixing a slide, my thing to show you, but on the previous page, those, those standalone, it's our intent for the town to restrict those boxes and provide the alternative that you go to a centralized box that's covered, as in the other slides.
Yes.
Can we do that?
Ultimately, USPS has this final say on whether-
So, let me ask you a question, because we've done some extensive research in calling UPS and tracking. So, this is really an agreement between the post office and the development?
Yes, yes.
But if the town regulates a different option, then how do we plug that in?
Well, I think it would ultimately start with us. We would work with the developer during the conceptual planning of the subdivision, recommend that they go in in a certain area. And I imagine during the plating process is when it would need to get approval, possibly before the plating, the plat is approved, approval from USPS that it goes there, and then it's designated on the plat, as it would, as would an easement.
So, now, I would agree with that. So, the question, I think, more specifically is, to the Stony Creek and to the other additions that we already have PDs out that we're kind of locked into, can we change and can we begin to regulate the centralized boxes that are covered versus these standalones?
We, the current subdivisions that have already been approved and are building in, like Homestead 6 or 2E, 2F, from what I understand, Rashad said we have no authority over those. This would be more for the phases to come, like Track 2, 3B, 3C, 4B, 4C.
Yeah, I would like to know how we can't have some say in that, since this doesn't exist now. Homestead 1, and this is really question, it's not meant to be an inquisition.
Yeah.
But Homestead phases 1, 2, 3, 4, including my house, we have standalone mailboxes.
Yes.
So, now we have a substance of change where the developer's like, oh, I'm going to save some money, I'm just going to put one out here because I can. But that's really not in the spirit of where the PD is now, what's being done. It seems to me that somehow we can restrict and eliminate or give an option to do something other than this. Some of the ones they've seen in Homestead are not accessible to ADA, are not accessible to me, quite honestly.
The ones that the sidewalks aren't in to guide to the path.
Yeah.
Yes.
That you can't, you can't walk anywhere around that concrete path, that is shown there. So, if we can, as a town, eliminate that standalone, that's my preference. I just want to vote on this, but I'll promise you, I've gotten more phone calls over this than anything else in our town recently.
Okay.
So, I don't know how we can do that, Mayor. I don't know what the other council members think about that. I don't think these are very aesthetically pleasing to our community. We're going from nice mailboxes to a metal box that's just stuck up in somewhere, and it's not currently in the PD. So, the developer has, it seems to me, they have some obligation to communicate how, how are we going to proceed? So, if we are going to try to eliminate this by developing another option, that this is what our town wants, then I'm good with that.
Ms. Allen, let me, let me give Ms. Clark a chance to talk.
So, my understanding, after meeting with the postal service, Rashad and I met, they had representatives, they came out and met with us on site, is that we can make this the requirement. However, there are separate postal rules that regulate and would supersede any regulations that we put in place. Most notably, they require that cluster boxes must not require residents to walk more than one block to get their mail. So, we can't just say, you can't have a standalone, smaller cluster box because depending on open space locations, we can try and plan around that in the early phases of development, but there are postal rules that we're going to have to take into consideration, and in some, some areas just may not be feasible.
That's true. I just want to say that I've also seen that, and that makes a lot of sense because the way that they're positioning them now, nobody would ever have to walk more than a block. So, in some instances, you know, there, 2F at the bottom, the southwest corner, there's an open space lot right there. So, that works for them, but other, other- streets, it's too far. So possibly the best that I've seen is that people put it on the side yards. So on a corner, on, on corner lots, you would see it placed there. So they make an attempt to not place it directly in front of homes, if they can, but ultimately we have to adhere to that, to that distance requirement.
I understand, we had to adhere to the USPS. I got, that's the rule. But I'm going back to Ms. Allen's. What is the town can to make it best fit for us, right? I understand the end USPS will supersede, God, but God be something we can do. We may not win every case, but at least get to a point where it best suits us.
So I think from my perspective, us having these regulations in the UDO gives us an opportunity to address it early on in that planning process, to make sure we have the most aesthetically pleasing cluster mailboxes possible and the layout that works the best, utilizing those open space areas to minimize those, those in the middle of lot lines or in front of homes. We can really take a look at that early on during the, the planning process. That, I think, would be a big advantage.
But I think in response to what Member Allen was talking about, I think he's good with where we're going forward, but what about the existing PDs that are out there that don't have to look at the current UDO and/or development? And I guess one thing that comes to mind is, a couple of years ago, we looked at passing another phase of Stony Creek where the two men, means of ingress egress were being adhered to, which were not a part of the original PD. Now, we ended up going back because there are people that bought, we, we fixed that one, and it ended up not being the two means of ingress egress. My point being, though, there's gotta be a way then, if the town was pressing for it then on that scenario, and granted, getting to a post office box to get your mail isn't quite as critical as maybe two means of ingress egress, but there's gotta be a way. Because we found a way that time to change the PD, which is, once PD's done, it's basically stamped in concrete until civilization is wiped out and we start all over again. Just my point.
We, we can definitely look into that. I have the contact, like Leslie does, of the, of the USPS federal worker for this district, and I remember him saying he'd be open to working with us. We, we weren't, we're just not trying to disrupt the current phases very much and just plan this for new developments that come. But we will look into that, certainly.
Just, go ahead, Larry. I'm sorry, okay. My, my question is, I think Leslie made a reference that you have to put them someplace where there's a limited restriction walking area. So how are these bigger ones gonna work? If it has to be within a period of time, it looks like there's about fifty here, that surely is not gonna meet that restriction. So is it our intent, as we go forward in, in PDs, to make this a part of the PD, that they're gonna agree to it, and then, which case, UPS comes up and says, oh, we don't like that, so we're gonna do something different?
So the way I understand it, the regulations in the UDO don't specify the amount of boxes you have to have in order for it to be clustered or covered unless it is, as long as it's more than three, we require that it's covered. So whether it's, right, that's the proposed language that I see, is that as long as it is more than, clustered locations with more than three cluster mailboxes shall be covered. Covers shall be designed with a pitch roof similar to the example shown.
But does it meet the, the walking requirement that we just referenced earlier?
So I can see where three, more than three would, yes. You would have more than three cluster mailboxes on a block.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Allen, I, I don't know, the fifty boxes will walk in Sunnyvale with that, you know, one acre land. Yeah, that's just, that's just definitely going to be a, yeah.
Which I'm fine, I, I don't like the metal boxes. It doesn't-
Just to be real clear, the metal boxes don't represent anything that I see in Sunnyvale currently. And we may be heading down that road as a filler for the PD, but it doesn't, it doesn't work. We may be stuck with it, but it doesn't work with the design that we have in Sunnyvale currently.
Yes, sir. And that's, that's initially one of the comments that we got, is the design of it. And that's why-
One important thing that kind of bothers me, that's been brought up before, but we haven't ever really focused on addressing, and that maybe this isn't the avenue to do it, and that's non-ADA accessible mailboxes. Who's the ADA police? Because let me tell you, in the private sector, if you don't do something that's not ADA compliant, you're gonna get nailed to a cross. So, just as a side note, I think we need to go back and put pressure on those developers, that if they're still developing, that they get that fixed. I don't know that they exist, but I trust a fellow council member along those lines that it, it does exist, and we need to look at what we gotta do to fix it.
So also, you know, it's interesting that the regulation from USPS is, nobody has to walk more than one block. But think about Spring Creek Estates, and think about 5A and B. There aren't no blocks. They're one long street. Exactly how do you do it when we have some one acre lot divisions, subdivisions, you know, the, the block is the entire street? So it seems like that would tend to be the argument we could use to say, we want clusters that are a little bit bigger than one block, rather than all these boxes sitting over three hundred feet.
Right. So, I agree that, you know, if, Leslie, do we know if they defines block? You know, so, you know, right. But no, I, I appreciate what you guys are doing. I, I am not a fan of these cluster, cluster mailboxes. And from my understanding, the developer could protest and go to the USPT and complain. Is that correct? So could we encourage the developers also to maybe go back? Could we encourage them to kind of push back on this?
Yes, but it would, it would have to be like a three-way deal between the postal service. I think it, you know, giving them the option, I mean, they can go ahead and make, make the initial contact with the postal service and then work with them. And just my opinion, it may be, it'd be best that we, we instigate that.
Right. And I'm asking, could we instigate?
Oh.
Prompt the developer, ask the developer, let's go back to the US post office and see if we can get away from these cluster mailboxes, go back to the mailboxes that the rest of the mailboxes in Sunnyvale are, you know, standalone.
They, from my, when we had the meeting with them, they stated that in subdivisions with, where six lots were remaining, then they would still be open to that. If it was, you know, that development was still needed and be done. But the newer, the ones that are already maxed out, I believe that it'd be more difficult to have that. I, I can look into this, can't say off the top of my head, but I'll, I'll reach out to our contact at the postal service.
Right. I, I'd just like to see us to try to maintain what we've, we've already been using, the standalone mailboxes. Try.
So Eric, can you clarify that, what you just said? If there's six lots only left, they can go ahead with their original plan. But what if there's only six lots building, such as in Spring Creek and 2E and-
5B and 2E.
Where there's only like few houses built.
Yes.
Are they gonna have to do something there? Or can they go ahead with their standalone mailboxes that, throughout the rest of that subdivision?
Uh, I think I misspoke. Those will have to comply with the cluster box units.
So will there be a mix in there of those who already exist, think about the falls, those already exist? Some will have, and then some will-
The falls, from what I understand, the falls is gonna continue with the single units.
Okay. Well, then let's go to 2E.
Spring, Spring Creek.
Will those-
2E?
2E?
Uh, 2E, from what I understand, that's gonna continue with the cluster box units. But I, I can't say off the top of my head for sure.
Yeah, 'cause you've got some subdivisions that are already having houses built and may actually already have a mailbox up standing in front of their house.
And that's where we're running into this problem, and we're trying to get on top of it. But I will look more into that.
Counsel, this is the first reading of the ordinance anyway, so hopefully Eric can and staff can get some more information and clarifications. Again, this is a public hearing portion of the agenda, so I'm gonna open up the public hearing. So if anyone would like to come forward and talk about this subject, please do so. Okay, now one is coming forwards. We're going to, I will continue the public hearing on February 25th, as we do the second reading. Moving on to item number nine, that's the discretion and action items. Director Development Services, discuss and consider and, and act upon a request by Colin Hellrich to, to approve a final plat for Stony Creek Phase 2F at or about 334 jobs and road.
Yes, so this is the, this proposal's for the approval of the final plat for Stony Creek 2F. Staff recommends approval. All staff review comments have been addressed by the applicant. Final proposed plat's in accordance with the development standards for the property. The applicant is subject to the traffic, payment of traffic mitigation fees in accordance with the ordinance 463, eleven hundred dollars per lot paid at final plat approval. We have received the check for eighty-eight thousand. Next, the applicant is subject to escrow payment for the future construction of the underground crossing near Nance and North Collins Road. The ordinance 463 requires payments of the funds at the completion of Track 2 for Stony Creek. Phase 2F will finalize the development of Track 2 for the Stony Creek development. The escrow amount was approved during the preliminary plat, approved escrow amount is five hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-two, seventy-nine cents. HOA documents will be required for the development with the recording of the final plat. We do have our applicant here, and his engineer as well, if you guys have any questions.
Counsel, any questions for the, for the staff?
Eric, with regards to the underground tunnel, when was that cost estimate done?
Um, I cannot speak to that. I believe our applicant can, he has all the numbers here. I'm not familiar with that. But I did want to mention that the, that the underground tunnel will be completed during the second phase of the expansion of Collins-
It was done eighteen months ago. So how accurate is that today?
I'd, I imagine the explanation of construction costs, it may change some. I, I can't speak to that, though, our applicant is here.
Okay. I'm, I'm concerned about the cost estimate there, because we're eighteen months past the cost estimate. Sure, there's inflation built in, but probably that inflation is already used up eighteen percent of it. Eighteen months of that, five years.
It's gonna even go higher by the time we build the-
And, yeah, of course it's gonna go higher, but perhaps the starting point ought to be today rather than eighteen months ago.
The applicant is here? Good evening. I'm sorry?
The public hearing open?
This is not a public hearing item.
Colin Hellrich at 5225 Village Creek Drive with Daddy Anderson and Associates, who are the engineers and planners, on here behalf for the applicant. In regards to the escrow amount, we had included the, an escalator, basically an inflation factor on that, that we worked out with the previous town engineer and had that approved through town count, or P&amp;Z and town council at the time of the preliminary plat.
The inflation factor?
Yes, sir.
Do you recall, what was the factor of that?
Three percent.
Three percent over five years, yes. I don't think it was in this packet.
Hello, counsel, thank you. My name's Craig Campbell, 385 Inwinus Drive, Inglewood, Colorado. I'm the applicant here this evening. And in regards to the, to the question on hand, there is a, a five percent escalator, I'm sorry, three percent escalator escalated over five years. So it goes beyond the eighteen months and continues out for five years, and that's an additional eighty-two thousand dollars on top of five hundred and sixty-thousand
Is it three percent every year, or three percent for the five-year period?
Three percent per year. Over a five, for five years, three percent calculated on a five-year basis annually.
Answer the question, Mr. Bay?
Well, it, it's certainly an answer to the question, but first of all, my concern is, it wasn't done by our current town engineer. It was done eighteen months ago. And yes, there's an inflation factor that's good for five years, but we're already a year and a half into that five years, and we hadn't even approved it yet. So I'm not sure that we ought to do a cost estimate today and start the five-year period over, because we don't know what the cost is. And frankly, we have a new town engineer. And I'm concerned that we have that right cost. And yes, there's an inflation factor on that, but we've already used a year and a half of that.
Good point. Anything, any other question for the applicant? What are any thoughts on that one?
I would just say, I don't know that it would be on us to be under the scrutiny of town staff as they would come and go from their positions, that we would have to recalculate expenses based on staff's here, there, you know, new staff coming and going. It, it was a fair amount that all, all parties agreed to. Understand, we did have a five-year inflation factor. Sounds as though this will be built within that timeline. And so we feel that it's, it's been a fairly agreed-upon amount. We've already written the check and given the check to the town as well.
With regards to the tunnel and its connection to the trail, now that we have a reconfiguration of Nance Road, how does this get to the school, the new school? Is that part of this requirement? It does say in there, the school property, if you read the requirements, which is kind of interesting, it must go to the nature center, it must go to Track 4, and it must go to the public school. So how does this get to the public school? I don't see that on this drawings. Well, I know, but that goes up towards Nance Road. I don't see anything going to the school.
Well, and maybe it wasn't clarified, but the sidewalk does go up there.
The new intermediate school? The new intermediate school, which is behind it?
Which is down here.
Not too far down there.
But we always knew that it was gonna be more than the school property.
Yeah.
So I guess my comment is that developers acted in good faith with what we've given them in the past, and they've moved, I mean, they can't be obviously responsible for town staff. We could, it's really our fault, we haven't done it. I mean, it's not their fault we haven't repaired Nance Road or, or Collins Road or constructed it. I understand your point, Councilmember Wade, but at some point, how long do we drag this out with the developer and trying to hold him responsible for continued escalated cost? I, I don't, I don't know how we can do that and ever reach a finality, because we don't even know where we're going with it. And so I think we have a, a fair amount of dollars here. They've done an escalation factor based on their best estimate. And as much as I don't like it, I think we're bound to act in good faith with the developer as we have, as they have with us on the escrow amount.
You're gonna come to some discussion here. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Counsel, additional comments on this one?
Mayor, has our town use attorney had a chance to look at this and review it for comment?
Ms. Manager, Ms. Manager?
Are you asking if the attorney-
Yes. No, I, I'm the town, attorney, I'm talking about town engineer, right?
No, the land use attorney. Have they had a chance to look at this?
No, the land use attorney has not looked at this, and I've just been consulting with Mr. Dodd and also Lyle to see if I could get some clarity based upon your question.
And I know this has been going on a while, right, several places, and the escrow has, I believe y'all continued it at one point in the fall or something, or last spring, correct? As far as that.
My, my concern that what I was asking, and I apologize for the sidebar, but because I'm not as familiar with this case, obviously. But what I was reading was that the escrow amount was approved during the preliminary plat for the phase. So that, that was what jumped out to me, is it sounded like we had already approved this and that now they've paid it. And so that was the question that I was asking of our attorney. And so that was the question that I was asking of our attorney is, you know, can we move backwards if we've already approved it? And that was really the gist of the sidebar going on over here.
Well, and Mayor, that I recall, the OPCC for this project was not done by our town engineers, it was done by Freezing Nichols and/or another company, I don't remember exactly for sure. I know that I hadn't had a chance to look at it, but, or go back and research that to find out, but I believe it was either Freezing Nichols or another engineering firm.
What was the applicant's engineer?
It was, was it the applicant's engineer? That's right, it was the applicant's engineer, because we actually had a show and tell back in the back one day where we discussed through all this. You know, those numbers were concurred with, I believe, and Leslie, by our town engineer at the time, along with the inflation factor of the five years of three percent per year as shown on the table. Again, this is final plat stage. We can't back the horse up. You know, we might have made a mistake the time before or previously, there may have been mistakes made. I hate that it happens, but the thing is, you can't back the horse up. Once this is, once we've pulled the trigger pretty much at the preliminary plat and the developers going down the road, then all those agreements are what the agreements are. I'm with member Finch down there that there's some things about this I may not like, but it's sometimes you just can't back that horse.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We could go into executive session briefly on this, so there you can put a bigger picture, explain some things, I'll have Lyle come back also, if that's all right.
All right, so with that recommendation, now it's the time? Eight oh six, I'm going to adjourn to the executive discussion. Please hang on. Counsel, are there any additional discussions on this topic? Any questions for the applicant or staff?
Mayor, what kind of post office, post office box are they going to put into this? And that's actually somewhat serious, are we doing the clusters here, too?
Yeah.
I see his head shaking.
This is a different flat, okay. Okay. Counsel, if not, can I have a motion with respect to request by Colin Helfrich to approve a final plat for Stony Creek Phase Two F at or about 334 jobs and road? Second? Motion made by Egan, second by Mr. Finch, to approve the request by Colin Helfrich to approve a final plat for Stony Creek Phase Two F at or about 334 jobs and road. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, six in all. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number ten, which is the building inspector portion on the agenda, that is to discuss and consider first reading of ordinance nineteen dash zero five, an ordinance of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, amending chapter three of the code of the town of Sunnyvale, but deleting section three point two zero one to three point two one two, and adding new sections three point two oh one to three point two one three, thereby adopting the international building code, international residential code, international mechanical code, international plumbing code, international fuel gas code, international energy conservation code, international property maintenance code, international existing building code, international swimming pool and spa code, twenty-eight additions, and the national electric code twenty seventeen addition, and providing certain additions and deletions thereto, providing for a severability clause, providing for an effective date. Doug?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you for your time and consideration for the adoption of the two thousand and eighteen international codes and the two thousand and seventeen national electrical code. These codes are in place to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Sunnyvale. These codes are cycled every three years, and currently, we are three code cycles behind. By adopting these codes, we will be current with the code cycle and be able to administer these codes accordingly. As the building official, I have contacted current builders and developers to make them aware that staff is presenting this new adoption, and once approved by council, staff will inform them of an effective dates. With this being the first reading and requiring a second reading prior to approval, staff is working diligently through a list of additional items that has been brought to our attention, and as we research and verify these concerns, staff may recommend some amendments prior to the new code adoption. Thank you for your time in this matter.
What is the general feedback from the developer?
Most of the builders and developers that I've talked to are understanding of that because we're one of the first municipalities that are taking this step, but most, a lot of other municipalities in the general area are also going to be taking this step at a future date, so they have already started gearing up for preparation of these code changes.
The development's already approved, they have the grandfather clause?
Yeah, these codes really won't affect a lot of the developments, other than the new developments that are coming along that will have to write their deed restrictions and their CCNRs.
Counsel, question for Mr. Key.
So, quick question, thank you. Why are we adopting the twenty seventeen electrical code, not the twenty eighteen electrical code?
Because there's not a twenty eighteen.
Okay.
The electrical code is always a year behind the international codes. Why that is, I don't know, I can't answer that question, but that is the most current code that the actual state of Texas is under at this time.
Okay, and to clarify the point you just made, I believe, with the mayor, is that any existing development that we have that's been approved will not have to comply with these codes.
Correct.
It's only new developments, so it has nothing to do with a resident, an individual resident, residents, it has to do with a development, is that correct?
Well, it has to do with development and new construction and remodels, add-ons, various things like that. So let's use an example, let's say a home, after we adopt these codes and we put them into effect, they're on effective dates. So these codes will go into effect that date, so any resident that wants to come in and add to their home, put on a patio cover, do an accessory structure, they would have to adhere to the adopted codes at that time.
And, okay, so you addressed remodel, but you did not address new construction. So would new construction have to, any new construction have to comply with these codes, or does a previous code?
At the adoption of these new codes, everything will go into effect at that point, so new construction would have to apply to the new code.
Any house, any new house being built will have to apply to these codes?
Anything that's existing right now that has already been submitted for permit review will be under the old code cycle. But anything submitted after this is adopted will be under the new code.
Thank you for entertaining my questions, I learned a lot, thank you. Doug, thank you very much for working on this, and with regards to additional items, do we have a timeline as to when those additional items will come back for consideration?
Well, I'm hoping, I'm working on those at that time, myself and staff is working on those at this very moment. As we discussed earlier today, some of those things we're looking into, and so I'm, hopefully would have a lot of those things in place prior to the second reading so that we can present those to council.
That is in two weeks?
Yes, sir.
And yeah, so we'd overview the need and the desire for those projects.
You said six meetings?
I'm sorry?
Six meetings?
I think six weeks, probably about three meetings.
Counsel, anything else, Ms. Black?
No.
Counsel, what do you think about the approach?
I like it. I think it'll be great to get some of the residents involved. I think that's gonna be pretty aggressive and optimistic, because I think there's gonna be a lot of education on it. But, no, definitely if, but I like it. We just may need to add a few more meetings or extend the time period, I think.
Quick question on the number of people we're asking to serve. I see seven blanks. Is that like your ideal number, or?
That's my recommendation.
Your recommendation? Okay. If we have a lot of interest, then maybe we can look at that. I don't know what, we'll see, I guess.
Yeah, let's look at who is available and, you know, the interest level and we'll go from there. So as far as the, going back to your page number, here's the first chart. Go back to your blue-green chart. Again, my thought, and we talk a lot about balance growth and quality of life. My thought is that we should, you know, increase that percentage on the quality of life and balance growth. That's just my thought.
What would you change, Mayor? What would you take off? I mean, that's the problem, is you're taking from something I'd, no disagree with you, I just don't know what to change.
Yeah, I was thinking that maybe drop, you know, five points from transportation existing and add that to the quality of life and balance growth.
So five percent split between them? Or five percent each?
Yeah.
So make them all one? Or make it twenty, twenty-five, twenty, seventeen and a half? Each one of those needs to be addressed?
Yes. I just want us to, don't forget the quality of life and the balance growth. That's really what I was thinking about.
If I have good transportation and good public safety, my quality of life going up already.
Going what?
Is going up already.
And some of these may cross over, quality of life, you know, having good roads and being safe.
That's true.
That would lead to a good quality of life.
Maybe the CIP?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's some crossover here.
Maybe the CIP committee has, I mean, these are targets, maybe? And we get a group of the public in, there may be, with some good direction by staff, not to dictate where they go, but.
I think the goal of this is for staff to come up with a ranking of these projects, but it doesn't take into account citizens' wants, needs, and desires, and what those priorities are of citizens or the council itself. And so, that's where the ultimate recommendation from the Citizens Committee is gonna come into. They may say, yes, it ranked here, but we think it's a priority number one because of X, Y, and Z. And then you have that flexibility as well. You're ultimately the approving body of that. So you have that opportunity to do that as well.
I think it's a good start. I think it's, I think it's a place to start.
Good job, Leslie. Count additional discussions on this topic? Thanks. Moving on to the mayor-council portion of the agenda, that is item number thirteen. Discuss and consider resolution nineteen dash zero six, a resolution of the town council of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, in support of maintaining current revenue cap rates. I'm gonna turn that out to Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark, you requested this resolution, so I just want to give you the opportunity to present it.
Okay, so a bill's filed with the Texas Legislature that would change the rollback rate from eight percent to two-point-five percent. In its current version, the bill would apply to only the cities that combined with combined property tax and sales tax of fifteen million. At this time, this does not apply to the town of Sunnyvale, so we will remain at the eight percent rollback. However, amendments to the bill, as it makes its way through legislative process, could alter the parameters and ultimately negatively impact the town of Sunnyvale. A lot of times, these bills will change at the very last second, even on the floor. Ultimately, local government and its voters should determine the revenues needed to manage the operations. So, this resolution just states that we would like it to remain the same, and currently?
Can you read the resolution?
Okay.
There it is. You're welcome.
Okay. Resolution of the town of Sunnyvale in support of maintaining the current revenue cap rates. Whereas bills have been introduced to cap the amount of property tax revenues cited, cities can collect each year in an effort to reduce the property tax burden on homeowners and businesses. And whereas currently, if a Texas town or city increases property taxes collections by more than eight percent over the previous year, voters can petition for an election to rollback the increase. And whereas bills have been introduced to lower the rollback rate, require mandatory elections of an increase over an artificially low threshold. And whereas, according to the state Comptroller's latest survey of property taxes in nine-hundred-sixty-three cities in Texas, fifty-six percent of cities raised the property taxes by less than four percent from 2014 to 2015. And twenty-seven percent of cities actually reduced the property tax. And whereas, that means property owners in the last, in at least five-hundred-forty-seven cities would have been, would have seen no reduction in their town or city's property taxes if the four percent cap had been in effect. And whereas, while the savings to individual taxpayers are very small or even nonexistent, a two-point-five percent tax cap could represent a loss in vital town or city services. And whereas, cities collect just sixteen percent of the property taxes levied in Texas. And whereas, according to the Comptroller's report, the total amount of property taxes collected by the cities rose by three-point-six-one percent between 2014 and 2015. And whereas, school property taxes have been rising because the legislature continues to reduce the state's share of funding for schools, which forces districts to get more revenue from property taxes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town council of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, that if the above recitals are true and correct, that the town council of the town of Sunnyvale supports the current eight percent cap and urges no changes to be made to the rollback rate, thereby allowing towns and cities the ability to meet local needs and keep this local decision-making at the municipal level.
And then there's a cosponsor for this resolution, correct? Were you a cosponsor for this resolution? Were you a cosponsor?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, everyone heard the resolution nineteen dash zero six. Are there any discussions? If not, can I have a motion with respect to resolution nineteen dash zero six as presented?
Mayor, make a motion that we support resolution nineteen zero six as written. There might be an editorial word that we need to modify, but we can talk about that if we need to later.
You want to state what that is?
The fourth paragraph from the bottom, whereas school property taxes have been rising because the legislation continues to reduce the state's share of funding for schools, which forces districts to, recommendation to replace, get, to obtain more revenue from property taxes.
Okay. Instead of get, change to obtain. Okay?
Would you be okay with that, Mr. Clark? Or is get more appropriate?
Obtain, I will, I will accept it then. Thank you.
Okay.
With that, with that changed, then I'm making a motion that we?
Does that we have comments on the floor?
Ah, it's not, it's not a public hearing, no.
This is a resolution that's taken on behalf of the town, and you have the right to have something to say on it.
Okay, I, okay, I go next up then. Come on forward, sir.
Is that before or after I finish the motion, Mayor?
Good question. Let, yeah, that's a motion on the floor. Let me finish the motion. There's a motion made by Mr. Allen to approve resolution nineteen dash zero six. Is there a second?
Oh, second?
Okay, motion made by Allen, second by Mr. Clark. So I'm gonna hold that, and I'm gonna open up the floor for comments from the members of the public. Mr. Power, good to see you again.
Thank you very much. Member Powell, one oh nine, Sunbird Lane. The proposals that's been, the legislation that's been proposed in the Texas Legislature for a two-point-five percent cap is to give voters the opportunity to accept, approve, or reject a tax increase. It does not limit the town. It does not constrain the town, other than the fact it requires a council who is raising the taxes to seek voter approval if that tax rate exceeds two-point-five percent in an annual period. I see no reason why this council would object to having voter approval of a tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Power. Would anyone else like to come forward?
Let me respond to that.
Let me finish the, yeah. No one else is coming forward? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Vay?
That is true, but Sunnyvale currently is exempt from that regulation. We will remain at eight percent. It is a mandatory election if it's approved, and the law states as it is. There is a regulation in there that states that if the collected, if the aggregate of the collected property tax revenues and sales tax collections exceeds fifteen million dollars, then they're subject to the two-point-five percent cap. Otherwise, they're exempt and can remain at eight percent. So that's the way the law reads today. That has been changed about three times so far, so I don't know that that'll be the final legislation. So the two-point-five does not apply to Sunnyvale at this point. And even if it, we did decide to do the two-point-five, it would not be a mandatory election or even a called election, because we did not exceed the eight percent.
It's to state that we support it keeping at eight percent, which it currently is for us. That's the purpose.
Council member, would you like for me to share a few of the TML's kind of rationale?
Sure.
And this is not a position statement either way. I can just share with you some of the education that the city is given. But here are a couple of the kind of tricky parts of this, is it's not limiting, my understanding is it's not limiting on the rate, it's limiting on the revenue. So if our growth in revenue, in revenue from taxes, like the first year, new construction's not included, but the second year is. And so when those get added in, if it grows more than two-point-five percent, then in order to not hit this rollback rate, which causes a mandatory election that we have to pay for, and it also occurs in November, which gets very complicated, because as you know, we adopt our budget, and our fiscal year begins in October. So we're adopting a budget, and then we then have to have an election. So we're in the next fiscal year trying to go back and figure that out. And then if you also think about the amount of growth that we've been having in this community, we would have to keep lowering the tax rate, because it's based upon the total amount of revenue you bring in, not the rate. So in order to keep the revenue only growing two-point-five percent, and think about that, two-point-five percent, when you have a lot more to take care of in the community in terms of new developments and new parks and new amenities, things, new programs that the community wants. A two-point-five percent increase in a lot of cities wouldn't even cover a cost of living increase for a policeman or a fireman. And a lot of small cities wouldn't even cover the cost of buying a fire truck or another piece of equipment. So, again, I'm not arguing one way or the other, but those are some of the points, if you listen to the hearings being conducted at the legislature, why many cities are really opposed to the two-point-five that, you know, I think everybody is interested in, we all pay property taxes, so we're all interested in main, you know, managing growth, but it's the amount that it's so significantly low that it really can create a problem with managing a city with that growth rate. So those are just some of the talking points that we've observed during our time watching webinars regarding the legislative process. So I hope that gives a little bit of additional information to you.
Right. Again, this, this resolution just states that we want to keep it the same. Our concern is that this will take, erode our authority. The towns and cities, we should be allowed to govern our own, our own towns and cities, you know, we should be allowed to be able to govern. And this erodes our authority and takes power away from us, Sunnyvale, and sets an arbitrary cap on us that actually could really hurt us.
I've got a question about procedure. Is, once this bill passes through the House and the Senate, does it have to go to the voters, or does it not have to go to the voters?
My understanding is it does not.
And when, in timeframe, I mean, is this something that could happen tomorrow, or?
Whenever it goes through and leaves committee and goes to be voted upon. And it was proposed by the governor's office, so it will be, I'm sure, I would assume it would be signed, so.
Right. It was declared an emergency, so it's being pushed through very quickly. Both the House and the Senate released the same bill at the same time. And because it's emergency, they can, they can push it through the committee and get onto the floor quickly. So it could, it could go up on the floor within the next few weeks. So, and once they pass it, the governor will sign it, and it will be.
But yet, I think I heard the comment being made that they're still in committee and negotiating throughout committee.
Correct, correct.
I'm just trying to figure out how quickly the wheels turn, because my initial opinion to this is that we're premature. But I also understand sometimes you might be premature when something's imminent.
Yeah, I can tell you that during the hearings, cities across the state have been down testifying. Now, again, in its current iteration, we're exempt, but I think it's, if you've watched us over the last two sessions, as soon as it kind of leaves committee, negotiations begin, and it could be like, okay, let's all compromise on a different amount, but it applies to everybody. So, you know, I think from TML standpoint, it's about local control that you should push decision-making as close to the voters as you can. And that's really what their position is about.
Well, and I tend to agree, you push it to, as close to the voters as you can, but by, they're moving forward with what this lays out. And I'm just having discussion just to make sure I'm, I can make sure I'm not standing in the center, or maybe I'm more to the center. By promoting what was properly written here, you're, you're taking some of the opportunity out of the voters' hands. Because it's not until you hit eight percent that the voters have to deal with it, if I understood what has been said here correctly. This is, this is forcing it, if the two-and-a-half, the fifteen million dollars is a given, we're not, we're not gonna hit the fifteen million dollars. But this, so this is changing the rollback from eight percent down to two-and-a-half percent. Am I correct on those numbers?
Your resolution is saying, don't make the change that the legislature is considering right now?
Don't make it from eight percent.
Right, keep it at eight percent, don't make a change. That's what your resolution is saying.
So the voters don't get a chance to speak at eight percent?
No, if, if it's at eight percent, then yes.
Then the voters do get to speak at eight percent.
It's just keeping the system as it is.
So what, but your comment a few minutes ago is, is that try to leave more opportunity to the voter, at the voter level, but by agreeing with this, we're not?
Well, I think the argument of, again, like, that would normally be made is you, they all vote for you, so you all should make the decision upon what to do with this municipality's tax rate. So it's this voting versus?
Okay, so that becomes more localized.
It's localized because it's to the town. The town of Sunnyvale can decide what's best for the town of Sunnyvale, instead of being dictated by Austin.
Okay, and then I can deal with the issue that you presented about, well, this has to happen in November, because what you do is you build it into your budget, what an election costs, whether you have that election or not, you build it into the budget. And that way, if you have to have it, then you've got the money for it, which some people say is kind of a stupid use of the money, but it's just, you know, pigeonholed over there.
Well, also that, that it's not just the cost of the election, it's that money, that increment, so, you know, it could be?
The budget change.
Yeah, it could be, you know, several hundred thousand dollars is available or isn't available, and do you know which? So the budget that you prepared might not be available.
Okay, one last point, or thought, is we've been talking about the percentages, and it's kind of driven, this is kind of driven toward percentages, but do we, have we thought about it from the perspective of the fifteen million? Granted, the fifteen million might could go down, and more likely it might very well. But what would be our preference if they were to change the percentage going down? What would be a cap of the dollar value? What would we want to move, let's say, for instance, as an example, let's say that we were good for six percent, but we raised the cap to twenty million. Is there something in there that works? I mean, as many people here know of the time they've known me sitting up here and other places, I don't like to leave people only one option. I like to say, okay, if you're gonna do it this way, that's one way of doing it, but here's another way of doing it, because this particular scenario has another option. Okay, if we're gonna drop it down to two-and-a-half percent, we want to raise it to a hundred-and-fifty-five million. And I would be, I mean, you get to the same place. You see my point? Sadly, that's not written into this, and I don't, I'm not good enough. This guy right here's probably a lot better at coming up with what that number ought to be, based on the, you know, the sliding scale of what the numbers ought to be, but I would think that that ought to be up.
Kevin, what's the reason for?
Right, so I'd just say, this is the Texas municipal league's, the TML's position, and so this resolution is an attempt to support that position.
Well, I like to think we're brighter minds than just the TML. It's just a fine.
Mr. Vay?
Yeah, this has changed, as you know, this was first presented in 2016. Did not, did not succeed, did not get out of committee. I want some tax deductions too. So it's back now as a priority measure of the three leaders. Abbott, Ratliff, Paxton. And I think Bonham is, is leading some of the charge. They even appointed a special committee to hear this. They've already had hearings. Hearings did not get, probably carried out in the most calm way that they could. That's run by the chairman. So we're in the driver's seat right now. Our biggest risk is the big cities that will campaign for a higher percentage than two-and-a-half. And they will suck us in as part of the trade-off. For instance, Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, Austin, and so forth, might say, well, two-and-a-half's too low, because as you know, Dallas has already said it's thirty-two million dollar cut to their budget. And that's a lot of police officers and other things. So they could say that, well, we'll bring everybody in, and we'll just raise it to five, and we'll lose our exemption. So that's a risk. I think it's fine for us to stand at eight percent. But let me remind you that this year, eight percent exceeded the rollback rate. We had to lower the taxes to stay at eight percent. Now, it's probably a good prediction that we're gonna have the same problem next year.
Because of the property value increase we are having.
Because of appraisals. Now, they got a lot of us this year, but they're probably gonna go through ten percent again next year. And by the way, there's a bill that supports only a five percent appraisal increase. So there's a chance that's gonna change. But we're probably gonna have the same problem again, even at eight percent. So think for a minute, what's gonna happen if it's five percent or something of that nature? The other bill that was, has been succeeded was, would have drafted us into the two-and-a-half percent, because it was a county suggestion. So even though we would have not met the revenue requirements, we were in a county that exceeded five-hundred thousand people. So we would get sucked in because of other cities in the county. So we've, we've cleared that hurdle, but we still have several in front of us. So the eight percent is probably where we will hopefully stay, but it probably means even a decrease in our tax rate, again, because of values. So I think it's pretty important that we, you know, I'm, I was not a cosponsor of this resolution. I, I worry about meddling, because our senator is a sponsor on this bill. I worry that I don't want to tick him off. I am concerned about that. He's fighting for his East Texas cities and maybe not worried about us quite so much, because his other cities in this region are covered. They're gonna get capped. So the process here is this committee is probably gonna make a recommendation very quick, because this has been deemed a, an emergency bill. It's gonna be signed by the governor if it passes. It'll probably go into effect in September. And we will know about it, but if we exceed the rate, it's a mandatory election, not an optional election, not a petitioned election. It's a mandatory election. And although we've seen some tax ratification elections in this last cycle, that did get approved, that doesn't mean all these, the next election is gonna be an approval. Because taxes are increasing, as you know, significantly in our school as part of that. So I think it's a concern that we all have and recognize. But it also could mean we have to cut a whole bunch of things after we set our budget.
Yep.
Because we don't have much time after it goes into effect to approve a budget and set a tax rate.
Point, Mr. Vay?
Mayor, I think it's fair to say that probably what we're looking at in legislation now is gonna change. Very seldom does it ever stay in committee and come out the same way. There's gonna be some negotiations. We don't know what that's gonna be. But I think it's fair to say that at two-and-a-half percent, if this passed and if it impacted Sunnyvale, we could not sustain this town's budget with that. So for me, that's the bigger topic here, is that, for those of you that know me personally, if you don't, let's go have coffee. I'm a big, big proponent of change in the way we do property taxes and assessment in whole. But in this case, if this were to pass, and we were to be sucked into the two-and-a-half percent for whatever the negotiation happens, our town would suffer immensely. Whether you voted for it or not, if you have to vote, you could vote against it. But we could not fund this town at two-and-a-half percent, and that's my bigger concern.
And Larry makes some good points, excuse me, Ron, makes some good points, because the bills that are also pending down there would freeze property values for cities that's age sixty-five, but it would exempt from property taxes those who are age eighty. And that would take a whole bunch of tax revenues off of our books if those were to pass.
And by the way, I'm actually in favor of capping. There's no reason why an eighty-year-old should have to be paying school taxes. That's my personal opinion, we don't have to debate that here. It's a whole big changing data, but if this passed here at two-and-a-half percent, Sunnyvale could not sustain this budget. And I think as a community, that's what I represent, is that we need to be able to make our budget.
Mr. Vajani comments?
Just brief comment, not even talking about the numbers. The fact the legislature says that they want to give us local control is really a falsehood, because we have local control. We have hearings on our budget, many hearings on our budget we sat through last time. Citizens have a right to come and talk to us about their budget. We are elected by our citizens, and we make those decisions. If we are- If we are not being good stewards of that dollars, then they can make a change. And so the fact that they're proposing this as local control is not really what it is. It's the legislature trying to appease what they've talked about. We have local control. And so it's not really about the dollars. To me, it's about just the semantics that go along with what they're saying.
Right, and let me add, I'm excited that Texas legislature is taking on teachers' pay raises, school finance reform, and property taxes this session. These are all very important issues that need to be addressed, and I applaud our representatives for taking on these challenges. I appreciate the coordination and the efforts that they've done in their committees and timing and whatnot to address these important issues and push them through. And I think I agree, I think everybody here agrees, you know, we pay too much in property taxes. Our property taxes are very high. But my concern about the fast-tracking is that there's going to be unintended consequences, and a one-size-fits-all does not fit our town. I think, you know, I think the Texas legislature needs to go back to the drawing board and keep on looking at ways to better, better deal with our property taxes and better have better reforms. So again, I'm sponsoring this resolution because I don't think that us, again, it doesn't affect us now, but it could, it could change at any second, even when it goes to the floor. I just have a concern that if we get, do get put into the 2.5 percent, it's going to be very bad for us. So this resolution just says, let's keep us task quo, let's keep it the 8 percent rollback rate as it currently is.
Are there any additional discussions? Okay, so we already have a motion made by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Regan, to approve resolution 19... Clark, sorry. Resolution number 19-06 as presented. All in favor of the motion, signify. All opposed, motion passed 6-0. Council, moving on to the last item of tonight, that is to mayor and council, request for future staff updates and agenda items. Are there any other requests? Sir?
Yeah, could I get a copy of the land attorney's contract that we apparently ratified? Maybe ask for a future discussion on that at our next meeting. Second item, I don't think we ever brought back the water bill senior tax credit that we were supposed to get some more information on and bring back. That needs to be brought back for discussion. Last, just an item, as we get ready to approve the official newspaper for Sunnyvale, can we explore alternatives to that? Our official newspaper is the Mesquite News, and frankly, almost nobody in Sunnyvale gets the Mesquite News. So is there an alternative via the website, the Friday Update, the school folder, whatever, to use as an alternative when we don't have a Mesquite newspaper that services our community in total? I would like to see a better use of the official announcements and the money we spend to be actually benefiting our town, rather than meeting some legal requirement that doesn't fit our town. So that'll be coming up soon as we make that annual disclosure. Maybe we can look at some alternatives.
All, can he?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Guss, we all welcome you to our town. Expertise is outstanding, and we would look forward to working with you and the rest of our directors in our town. I look forward to y'all working together in a really positive manner, and again, welcome. And I'm looking forward to seeing your expertise take place in our town. Thank you.
So if there's nothing else, now time is 9:07 PM. I'm going to adjourn the regular town council meeting of town of Sunnyvale for February 11th. Thanks, everybody. Good night.